More people.
My total of guys.
I guess there's nothing we can say anymore.
The dents are consuming the pressure.
That's how we get them down.
It's pretty easy agenda today.
You got to.
Don't say that.
You got a minute.
You got a minute.
Perfect.
Hey, Chris. They just added six new. Six new applications. Just added six more applications.
Richard.
Richard.
He's actually cleaning up from the store. His house. I mean, his is elevated. So we got. We got water when they give a lot. He owns a rental next door, which is not elevated. Yeah, it is.
That's the best when you lose something and you have a sudden epiphany.
High price classes, I think. They're getting somebody to get rid of those anyway, so those don't do either. Those are not flattering. You know, they still have some of their favorites at 7 feet. We can find some different.
You know, his dad stayed in his house.
Yeah, that's what it said. Some people just don't want to leave.
I ask myself all the time, is it the fear of you don't want to leave your house? Or is it the fear you're not going to? That's not what I rest in.
Probably. How are you doing, David?
I'm ready whenever Denise and you are ready.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. We would stand for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, free to be, and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, we have the roll call, please.
Here.
Christopher Poole.
Here.
John Moody.
Here.
Matthew Monk.
Derek Botlitz.
Here.
Chris Williams.
Here.
And Chairman Charles Gray.
Here. Any approval publication, please.
The items were advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on September 5th, 2024, to September 18th, 2024, and by activated certified mailings and site postings.
All right, thank you very much.
Apologize for calling him madam.
Yeah, right. He would have to make bring that up, wouldn't he? Let's see here. Ten minutes? Okay. All right, I'd like to welcome everybody today. We're the Planning Commission. We're appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. We meet twice monthly. We serve as a local planning agency and hold public hearings and transmit to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezonings, and conditional use requests. Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. If anyone is in opposition to any development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission transmits a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it's important for you to attend the appropriate Board of County Commissioner meeting. We have those dates available for you. Excuse me. For those of you who are not familiar with the meetings, we have three sections. Briefly, they are continuances, consent, and the regular items. Continuances, if they, we have a request from the applicant or from the staff. It's been our custom to grant continuances unless there's extenuating circumstances. Then we have a consent agenda, and those are items where we have not received any comments or concerns from residents or staff. Those will be read off one at a time. If you have something on consent that you'd like to be heard today, when I call it out, please raise your hand and we'll have a poll for consent and put it onto the regular items. And those are the items that will be fully discussed today. Applicants will have five minutes to make their presentation, and questioners will have three minutes to state their concerns or comments, and then the applicant will have an opportunity to come back up and try to respond to any concerns or comments. For those of you who intend to give testimony today, if you can, in other words, come up and speak, if you would stand and raise your right hand, please, and be sworn.
Do you swear a formal testimony you're about to give as truth to God?
I do.
All right, thank you. Is anybody here who would cost an extra time, Denise?
No, Mr. Chair, no request for additional time.
Okay. For future reference, if you needed extra time, it's important for you to let us know in writing, request, make a request at least 24 hours prior to this meeting. We don't have any such requests, so we'll be holding everybody to the times we've stated. If you have a cellphone or pager or something that makes noise, please put it in the silent position before we get started. And before we start the regular meeting, is there anybody here that's here to speak on something that's not on today's agenda? Okay? I'll be with you in a minute. Okay, I think that's it, so we can get started, so let's, let's hear, come on up then. State your name. Everybody that comes to speak, if you don't know, they need your name and your address before you speak, and so we have everything on the record, and we discourage any conversations from the audience because we can't get that on the tape, and when they try to translate that on paper, it just, it makes it impossible for them to know exactly what was said. So hold your comments until you get up here. Okay?
I can start?
You can start. I used all your time, actually.
Yeah. Nancy Hazel with 34110, A Nice Place, Dade City, Florida. I would like to respectfully ask the county not to accept any more applications in the Northeast Rural Protected Area and abutting areas that are continuance to the Northeast Rural Area. Refinements to these areas are necessary for the stability of the Northeast Rural Protected Area Plan. Some of the things that could be addressed are conflict zoning, landscaping, design, commercial standards, transition density to within the areas without, outside the rural protected areas, and all of these things need attention, and we keep having applications come in that don't fit into the plan and will eventually be the demise of it. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you. All right, Denise, are you ready?
We have another person that signed for public comment. Your sub-lancard says it's for public comment. Thank you.
Okay, no one? All right now.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission members, Denise Hernandez, Planning, Development, and Economic Growth Department. We're going to start at item PC1, which is PDE 257824. This is a zoning amendment, Sandarben LLC. The request is to continue the item to the October 17th, 2024, Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
Okay, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Okay.
Moving on to item PC2, that's PDE 257738, zoning amendment, Evans County Line, AD MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development. On that item, there are several ex-parties for the record, and we will be sending those to the clerk's office. We have an ex-party from Chris Poole, one from Chris Williams, one's from Commissioner Catherine Starkey, and one from John Moody. If there's any others, because it looks like they're sending separate emails, please let us know, we'll just forward them out over to us. On that item, the request is to continue the item to the November 7th, 2024, Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
Okay, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Okay.
Following item is PC3, PDE 250018. This is a comprehensive plan amendment, CPA 2405, Rural Area 4, and Urban Expansion Area Maps to Adjust Boundaries. The request is to continue the item to the December 12th, 2024, Planning Commission meeting, and this one you're actually sitting as a local planning agency, I should have stated that, at 1:30 PM in Dade City.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Okay.
And that's the end of your continuances. I'm actually going to move on to the addendum, which is APC 6.
Have a motion? Approve of continuances?
Move to continue items PC1 to the October 17th meeting in Newport Ritchie, item PC2 to the November 7th meeting in Dade City, and item PC3 to the December 12th meeting in Dade City.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Okay.
So we're going to go to the addendum, which is APC 6, PDE 257824. This is a zoning amendment, the name of Cytex NR Holdings LLC. It's for a change in zoning from an AR agricultural residential district to a C2 general commercial district for the voluntarily agreed upon deed restriction that limits those uses for the uses that are consistent with the C2 general commercial district. It's also known as the Live Local Act deed restriction. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
All right. Is the applicant present?
The applicant is virtually present.
Okay, anyone here to object?
I should also state for the record that we don't have anyone signed up to speak on WebEx on any of the items.
Thank you. Okay.
Following item is APC 7, PDE 257823. It's a zoning amendment, Anodyne 54 LLC, Anodyne 54 LLC East. It's for a change in zoning from a C1 neighborhood commercial district to a C2 general commercial district with a voluntarily agreed upon deed restriction that limits those uses to those uses that are stated in the C2 district, also known as the Live Local Act deed restriction. Comes to the recommendation of approval, and on this one, the applicant is also virtually present.
You said it's APC 7?
APC 7.
Is the applicant present?
The applicant is virtually present.
Anyone here to object? See anyone?
Moving on to the last item on your consent agenda, which is APC 8. This is PDE 257816, zoning amendment, Old Pasco West MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, Mary Elaine Sharp and Maxine Green. This is a rezoning from an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development to a MPUD Master Plan Unit Development to allow for 99 single-family detached units on approximately 6.55 acres. Comes to the recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet.
All right. Anyone here, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Seen objections? That's the last one on consent?
Last one on consent.
Okay, there are your motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, consisting of APC 6, APC 7, and APC 8.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Any further discussion of the motion? All in favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Okay.
All right, so we're going to move on to the regular item on your agenda, which is item P4, and as my colleagues bring that item up, I have a couple of things that are Housekeeping items on this item. This is PDE 25CU 03, it's conditional use, Cynthia M. Barthel, AnthemNet Inc., Verizon Wireless. This is for a 195-foot above-ground-level monopane wireless communication facility in an ER state residential district. There were several emails of objection that came in after the agenda packet closed. I did forward nine of those to the Planning Commission members with, you know, of course, the do not reply all, and we, these were also sent to the clerk's office. In addition, there was a correction to the parcel ID number inadvertently. It was correctly noticed, but I had inadvertently stated it was Sub 1, so the correct parcel ID number, I will read it into the record. 29-24-21-0000-01000-0000, and that's a portion of that parcel. In addition, this morning, I also received a letter of objection from a person who lives at 14348 Willow Run Drive, so if I could please get that over to the Planning Commission members, because that did not make the agenda packet.
Okay.
Motion to receive and file. Second.
You have a motion and a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much on that. So this is PDE 25CU 03. It's conditional use for 195-foot above-ground-level monopane wireless communication facility in an ER district. That's a state residential, and the future land use classification is RES 3, residential 3 dwelling units per gross acre. This, it will consist of a 185-foot wireless communication facility with a 10-foot lightning rod as a monopane, which will be suitable for the co-location of three additional carriers, and this is proposed to be located within a 2,500-square-foot fence compound area. The overall parcel is 4.22 acres. The property is located in north-central Pasco County at the northwest corner of the intersection of St. Joe Road and Mount Zion. So this visual that I'm showing now shows the surrounding zoning districts. The actual, the parcel is Zoned ER State Residential, which is the zoning that is to the north and to the east. To the south is the city of Dade City. To the southeast is a subdivision by the name of West Hill Estates, and to the west is a subdivision, they're AR zone properties, which are an acre and a half or greater, and it is the Willow Run subdivision. This is the future land use, all RES 3, but for, of course, the city of Dade City, and as you can see, Swanee Lake is to the south. So access to the overall site is from St. Joe Road to the wireless communication compound area will be through a 20-foot-wide access and utility easement that is located off of St. Joe Road. This is the context map, just showing this around the area. This is a portion of the site plan that basically shows the setbacks from the property lines. It is setback from the northern property line to the compound, that is, 79 feet, to the southern property line, 160 feet, to the eastern property line, 449 feet, and to the western property line, 165 feet. This is the site, the tower, the tower site plan and the elevation. This basically shows you the fence compound area and the proposed landscaping, and that dotted circle around there is the fall zone for the, for the tower. This is photo simulations or a visual impact analysis. This is required as their, as part of their application. They have to show at least four views. So the views are basically with, without, and with. So this is looking east on Mount Zion Road without the tower. This is looking east on Mount Zion Road showing the tower. Looking northwest on St. Joe, just east of Mount Zion, without. The same direction with. This is looking north on Happy Hill Road without. And then with, I apologize. And this is looking east on St. Joe Road at Happy Hill Road without, and the same location with. This item comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions, and I am here for any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions up here? All right. Okay. The applicant present? Is this applicant present or virtually present?
Not yet, I don't think. Good afternoon, Mary Solick, 121 South Orange Avenue, Suite 1500, Orlando, Florida. I'm legal counsel for AnthemNet, who is the applicant on this particular application. Ms. Hernandez has done a fantastic job of laying out the facts of this case for you and evaluating it against your code criteria. I don't have any additional facts to add for you at this time. I do have a team of people with me today. Jen Frost, who's the project manager with AnthemNet, David Smith, who is the RF engineer for Verizon Wireless, who is the anchor tenant on the tower, and David Talby, who is the state-certified general real estate appraiser, who gave you that lovely 100-plus-page report that's in your package about property values, and then finally Harold Timmons, who is with Tower Engineering Professionals. I suggest that it may make more sense for these folks to talk to you after you've heard from the neighbors, and, and then they can address any specific comments or concerns that come up. Before you open it up for public comment, I do think it, that I'd like to say a few things to help frame the discussion today. Tower siting is more of a science than it is an art, and we don't relish taking applications through that pack the house. We try very hard to avoid this, but sometimes we just can't. When a new tower is proposed, we start with the wireless carrier's search area that is based on their network design, and that's science. That's just science. It's based on the RF propagation, where the existing antenna locations are located, what heights they're at, how the signal travels over the existing topography and terrain, and demands on the network, and all of that boils down to a search area. The tower developer then gets that search area, and we have to find a location in that general area that's what I like to call BLZ. And the B stands for buildable. We first have to find a site that we can build. We have to avoid wetlands, we have to avoid floodplains, we have to avoid water bodies, we have to be able to get to the site, we have to avoid airports and their airspace. So we have to find something that's buildable. The L is for leasable. We have to find a willing landowner. We can't force anyone to allow us to build a tower on their property, and unlike other infrastructure builders like cities and counties and DOT and electric utilities and gas line providers who can use the power of eminent domain to locate their infrastructure, we have to find a willing landowner. I think I get fired. And Z is for zonable. When we overlay those local government regulations over the search area, we have to determine what we can actually get approved and what will allow us, we have, what properties, you will need all of the locational and performance criteria that are in the code. So when we overlay these three things, more often than not, we can find a site that doesn't ruffle too many feathers, but some cases, that just doesn't happen, and in the case of hand, we were left with very few options, and unfortunately, we have unhappy neighbors. The site before you, however, meets all of the code requirements. We meet every single requirement in your code. We're not asking for any waivers, no variance, no relief from setbacks. We're not asking for any relief from any county requirement. So before you hear from the neighbors, do you have any questions for me or any members of our team?
Are you finished with your presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Anything for the applicant? At this moment? And see what their concerns are.
Mr. Chair, the first person I have signed up to speak on this is Lynn Johnson.
Okay, Mr. Johnson? Can you just state your name, Lynn, and your address, please, for the record?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Karen, I'm Lynn Johnson, 14552 Mount Zion Road, Dade City, which is just down the street from the subject site, and I have been sworn. We own approximately 30 acres along Mount Zion Road, including our home site and then some family company property, Triple J Ranch, several hundred feet down and all the way to the top of the hill. to the top of the hill. At this point in time, we have nothing but great views. You will see that this subject site, as they, as they showed in some of the presentation, is sitting in the middle of a pasture. There's not one tree, there's not a building, there's nothing else between it and the road and the adjoining, both, both in front and in back, to the, to the east and to the west home sites. In addition to which, in, in the Dade City development that's going on across the street, there are no residents yet, they're building houses, they're gonna have, I don't know how many, but this, this will be in their view, in their normal view. All they have to do is step out of their backyard, there's nothing between them and this.
Excuse me, do we have a map that we can put up that shows where the residential Maybe you could point out your area.
So this is the new subdivision coming in that's the city of Dade City annexed property here. Like I said, they have homes under construction, a number of them, and they'll look from here to there, nothing between them and this tower. Mount Zion Road, nothing between residents, residents, residents. Our property, and it goes on up here, and then Willow Run, here. Again, nothing between a one-hundred-and-ninety-five-foot tower with a Christmas tree on top. I mean, you know, I don't really know what purpose that serves, frankly, but the applicant said that they complied with all of the standards. So the county's location standard for a Tier 3 cell tower says they should be located in an area where the adverse visual impact on the surrounding area is minimized. Adverse visual impact should be measured by the presence and degree of the following negative factors. A large amount of the facility is visible from normal views. You can see it from everywhere, you even saw it in their examples. The facility is of a designed material location or size that readily catches and holds a viewer's eye when viewed from normal views. It's a twenty-story tower. If, if it were a building, it'd be the tallest one in Pasco County by far. The facility is in the normal view of a person and a moving vehicle for more than a short period of time. You can see it coming from here, down from Hale Road, you see it all the way just about up our road, you can see it coming from, from west to east, and you can certainly see it, again, here. The wireless facility is readily identifiable as a wireless facility by the average viewer. Again, you know, the first one-hundred-and-eighty feet is a tower with a Christmas tree. The facility, when viewed from normal views, appears out of place in the area. It couldn't be more out of place. I have twenty seconds.
Okay.
There's an absence of the existing visual impact from other uses in the area surrounding the wireless communications facility. There's nothing else. It's a pasture. The scale, height, and bulk of the wireless communications facility is significantly greater than the other uses existing around in the surrounding area. There's nothing in the surrounding area, except if you go a few hundred yards away, there are a couple of trees, there are no buildings, there, there is literally nothing between this facility and everything around it. It does not meet the location standards, and we would ask that you send a recommendation of denial.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions? Up here? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, next person, I'm hoping I'm gonna state this name correctly, is Pat Guanio.
Pat? Is there a Pat here?
She didn't wanna talk.
She does not wanna talk? Okay.
All right. Following person is Alexandra Baker.
Good afternoon, my name is Alexandra Baker, 14348 Willow Run in Dade City. Originally requesting the Planning Commission to accept my letter on the record in regards to P4, the proposed CU 2420 Vista Walk Tower. Just to verify, I believe it was mentioned that the email that was sent this morning is in regards to this letter, but did want to ensure that it is on the record.
It is on the record. They moved to receive and file.
It's this letter.
Perfect. All right, I would, and also would like to echo Mr. Lynn Johnson's remarks and express my concern and opposition of this proposal, and also request a recommendation of denial. Thank you.
Where are you located?
I am in Willow Run, I believe it's the fourth or fifth house to the right. I was within the five-hundred-feet requirement, I believe, by the county in regards to receiving a letter to that location.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna call this person again, just in case she signed up for this particular item, Yersa Blanchard. No? Okay, so Yersa Blanchard will not be speaking. Okay, following person is Nancy Johnson.
Nancy Caviness Johnson, not to confuse with Lynn Johnson, no relation. 14714 Mount Zion Road, Dade City, Florida.
Thank you.
And I apologize in advance, I'm nervous, I had too much coffee and not enough lunch.
Just, no, there's no need to be nervous.
Oh, sure there is.
You're among friends, so don't worry about it.
Thank you. This parcel of land in itself might be appropriate for a cell tower. AnthemNet has chosen this site because it would enhance their desired honeycomb effect with other existing cell towers, namely the one behind with La Cucchi Electric and another near Highway 52 and Smith Road. And it would provide better coverage to populous areas within Dade City limits, to the east Vista Walk and to the south Summit View. However, this parcel of land, where it is located, and what is established around it, makes it inappropriate. This tower would be less than two-hundred feet from two backyards and pool areas within Willow Run, a gated, deed-restricted, high-value residential community. It will be less than three-hundred yards or feet from Amoli's driveway, the center of their young family's activities, and also another high-value home. The cell tower will only have minimal setback from St. Joe Road. The proposed six-foot-tall PVC fence and shrubs will in no way provide adequate coverage to hide carriers' equipment and blend a one-hundred-and-ninety-foot-tall tower into the surrounding environment. It was stated at the neighborhood meeting that AnthemNet does not, as of yet, have the carriers' designs and are looking at an initial maximum of four carriers, but may add more down the line if the structure can hold them. At the neighborhood meeting, the question was asked why the cell tower could not be placed within the populous communities they are trying to provide better coverage to. AnthemNet stated that these developers have already received their entitlements, the lots have been platted along with open space and drainage, and there is no available space. They continued to state that some developers are open to siting towers at the edge of or within their neighborhoods, but these are already entitled prior to that point. Vista Walk and Summit View could continue to appear before the Dade City Planning Board and Commissioners for changes to their original entitlements. This is a forty-year lease for the proposed tower. Dade City Planning and Commissioners should provide this coverage for the areas they have annexed and developed. If the county were to approve this coverage, instead, for city residents, they should approve only a more appropriate site that does not negatively impact their own constituents and landscape. Because of this parcel's unique location, the property value impact study reported by Lee Pallardi is largely irrelevant. I'm almost done, thank you.
You got another minute.
The two comparison towers listed locally are setback from busy roads, both of which are in Pasco County, and provide coverage for populous areas within Pasco County, namely Marada and Epperson. The third comparison tower is in Spring Hill and is a cross tower located at a church who receives the lease income from the tower. Real estate values listed regarding local projects do not exceed two-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand. The study then goes on to report on high-value homes in Naples pertaining to a seventy-five-foot-tall tower built at an elementary school, as well as towers in Sarasota and Orlando, all with dozens of homes and neighborhoods surrounding the towers. Currently, this parcel is zoned a state residential, or I heard earlier ER. Could this designation please be explained to us, and what is the county, what does the county envision for specific historic rural high-value residential areas as such? I brought pictures of the homes taken from my cellphone in areas we are discussing, as well as the current communication towers in the Dade City area, all of which show better compatibility to their immediate area. We hope, if the planning commissioners are able to give a strong non-recommendation vote to their county commissioners for this project, they will do so.
All right, would you like to submit those for the record?
I'd like to.
Do you have a motion, please?
Move to receive and file.
Second.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Just one question before you sit down. Trying to make sure I understood what you said about, can you come back up to the mic? Were you saying that if it was a different design, that you would be less critical of it?
No, sir.
Like if it was a cross or something?
No, sir, not at all.
Okay. I just wanna make sure I understood what you were saying.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the last person I have signed up to speak, please call to make sure that he is indeed the last person, is Robert Wellborn.
Robert? You're the last person. Is there anybody else here to speak after Robert? I don't see anyone. Hey. Robert.
Good afternoon. Robert Wellborn, 14414 Willow Run, Dade City. I'm here on behalf of myself, I'm also president of the Willow Run Property Owners Association. To build on what some of the previous speakers have said, this site is in the stark wide-open. To decorate it as a tree is absurd, because there are no trees around it to even approach the height of this, this structure. That's number one. Number two, with the height of this structure, and it's my understanding that they can add an additional twenty feet without any further procedure, this structure, should there be a catastrophic failure, could impact St. Joe Road. It's not setback far enough from St. Joe Road. And again, it's my understanding that this site is being put in for the benefit of subdivisions that were annexed in by Dade City. And I also wanna make another point, that within the last twenty-four months, those very same subdivisions, I've watched two, nearly two-hundred-foot hillsides taken away, one dump truck at a time, which, by the way, has destroyed Happy Hill Road. But this creates a stigma. Why can't this stigma be put on one of those other stigmatized sites that's already been excavated and a mess made of? Why does it need to be on this pristine piece of property, completely unconforming to the surrounding uses? Our neighborhood, our home values in our neighborhood range probably anywhere from seven-hundred thousand to one-point-five million. This has a greater financial impact on our residents and our community, which is just simply a twelve-lock community, gated community, and it, you know, it's just, it has a more unfair impact to us financially, because we have a greater investment. And should our property values go down, it also, that impact would triple down to the county. But, you know, the, the appraiser put in their report about other sites and other comparables that were used. I wanna go on the record as saying, if you look at the cell tower on Island Boulevard, that was put in a site along a major thoroughfare highway, Main Artery Road, high traffic, it already has some kind of an economic impact on the buildings that are on that road. There's also a large body of water behind it, there's also large two, three-hundred-year live oaks that hide the equipment in the bottom of it, and there's also a county waste or a freshwater treatment plant immediately adjacent to it. So again, it's on a property that comes already pre-stigmatized. To take this property and stigmatize it with this, I feel like is not the proper application, and our community would recommend denial of the application.
All right. Thank you for coming. Any questions?
I just wanted to address the, the height thing, although it may be possible that they can add that height. From an engineering standpoint, they likely won't, because anything above two-hundred feet, there you have to conform to additional FCC, I'm sorry, FAA requirements for airplanes. So I know for a fact it has to be lighted at two-hundred feet and above, so most likely it's not gonna get extended. That's why most of these towers are under two-hundred feet.
I would also have one other question, if I may present it.
Yes.
In your map and your slideshow, it shows the affected area or surrounding area, I think is the way it's labeled, and I noticed that you asked for proper certification and service on this. I was never, I never received anything, and I'm very close to this site.
I think it's five-hundred feet, is that right? Are you, are you within five-hundred feet?
Had it not been for one of my residents bringing it to my attention, I wouldn't even know this project was going on.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay. Very good. If there's no one else to speak, would the applicant like to respond to some of the
Thank you. Commissioner Poinletz, you're absolutely correct. We would have to add lighting to the tower, but my client will agree to a condition of approval that the tower height not be extended above what has been submitted. So that's a one-hundred-and-eighty-five-foot tower with a ten-foot lightning rod. So we would agree to that, that condition. There was a comment made about it not being far enough back from St. Joe Road to not be a safety factor in the event of bad weather. The tower is setback from St. Joe Road, one-hundred-and-eighty-five feet, which is the height of the tower, and we're also having it engineered with a sixty-foot fall zone. So in the unlikely event of tower collapse, it would fall within that sixty-foot radius. So it's not presenting a safety issue to either anybody traveling on St. Joe Road or to the Willow Run subdivision to the west. Okay. Denise, can you pull up the adjoining property owners PDF? I just wanna point out, the first speaker, Mr. Johnson, he does own quite a bit of property out there. No, that's not, nope. That large red area that says same owner is Mr. Johnson's amalgamation of properties, but his home, if you go to the third page of that slide, his home is actually nineteen-hundred feet away from the tower. He, he's quite a bit, he's quite a distance away. Those distances are noted there. I'm gonna have David Talby address the property values questions. I wanna go back to the siding, the walk siding. Yes, let's go through this just a little bit. Let's get you all oriented. Do I have a pointer? Okay. So here's our zoning. This, all of that yellow is Pasco County, that's our subject property. That's our subject property. Mr. Johnson was incorrect. This property here that's under construction right now is still in Pasco County. This area that's not got a yellow color is Dade City. So here's our search area. We're just a tiny bit outside there. Dade City doesn't allow towers on residential zoning, which all of that is, so all of that's off the table. This yellow here is the wetlands that are in the area, so a good portion of our search area has wetlands on it, in addition to flood zones. And then, so that leaves us with really everything north of the flood zone and the wetland areas. Pasco County allows towers in every single zoning category. They're not deemed to be incompatible with residential development. They're allowed as a conditional use in every category, provided you meet the locational criteria. So we didn't have too many choices. The large, this large vacant land here, landowner said no. This is the, this is all developed with single-family homes. The Barthol property was really all we had left. And it, you're, they're correct, there isn't any screening on it, but we, again, we were left with no choices. That's what we had to work with. And the RF engineer will come up and talk to you about how that searching was derived, how the, who's getting coverage, who's not getting coverage. RF signals don't know jurisdictional boundaries. They don't determine that we're going to provide coverage to people who live in Dade City and not Pasco County, or Pasco County, or not Dade City. They just look at customers, and they look at a community that needs service. And I would think after Hurricane Helene, we would all be a little bit more receptive to the idea that we need strong and hardy infrastructure in our communities. So who wants to go first, RF?
Before you, before you change off that slide, I got one question for you. Just, what's the difference between the ring on the slide that you have up there now and the search ring that's in the, in your report?
It's the same.
Well, the one that's in the report, Omnicom, is that not you guys?
That is, that's your consultant.
That's our consultant?
Yes.
That's correct. He puts together maps.
Because their search, the search ring in there, and I don't know what the difference is, is quite a bit bigger than that search ring.
Yeah, the other thing I'd like to ask is, who decided to put the branches on there?
Your code, we're not unsympathetic to the adverse visual impact. And your code expressly states that a tree design is a mitigating design and is deemed to have less adverse visual impact. So we followed your code and put in the design that your code says has less visual impact.
Yeah, that's, I think it's a subjective opinion. It's a lot of folks who think that.
You know, I, I hear you, I hear you, but we, you know, I, I have to start with this. This is where I have to start. And that's what your code says.
Normally, what we've seen in the past, where we've seen these monopines, is when the resident specifically requested it, but most of them are presented to us as monopoles, at least from what I've seen.
You know, the tower developer would prefer a monopole. But we, we respected the black and white language of your code.
Because the other issue is, is the potential microplastics and all the other stuff that comes with that.
Right. And I have.
We talked about that in the previous meeting as well.
We did, and I've got the letter from Larson, the tower manufacturer. The branches are made from PVC material similar to underground PVC pipes, and they're stabilized, and the manufacturer insists that it's not danger, dangerous.
I beg to differ.
Excuse me, but what was that?
That's the letter from Valmont Larson Tower Engineering, the tower manufacturer.
Did you want us to file that?
Yes.
And you had asked us to receive and file.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Gray, would you please receive it?
Move to receive and file. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
Ma'am, is this?
We have to vote.
Is this site in the northeast rural area?
Let him finish the vote.
Home favor. Aye. Oh, it's like sign. Okay. Go ahead, Mia.
I don't know whether she can answer it or staff can answer. Is this site in the northeast rural area?
It is not, it's east of the northeast rural area.
Okay. While we're talking about visual impacts and while you reference the code, as I look through the code, this is, this is a tier-three tower, correct?
Correct.
And if I go to one-zero-zero-two subsection, one-zero-zero-two-point-seven, B, one-A, the end of that section says, adverse visual impact shall be measured by the presence and degree of the following negative factors. There's eleven factors there, and if I was rating that, I would rate you pretty high on nine of the eleven.
I hear you, but I want you to go all the way down to the bottom, where it says normal views, and you have a definition in your code that's pretty interesting. Normal views, as used in this subsection, means views from where a person would normally be present and be able to see the facility, as well as the area of view in the normal view of the average person. And here's the key, then you have a definition of area of view. It's measured as the area up to fifteen degrees above the horizon and thirty degrees left and thirty degrees right of the forward view. So that's meant to reflect what, more of a line of sight analysis, and more reflecting what you see when you're in your car looking this way, when you're out in your yard. It's not looking up.
We're not guilty.
Can you bring that photo back? Because I think I beg to differ with that.
Yeah, subsection three that I just referenced, it says, the wireless communication facility is in the normal view of a person in a moving vehicle for more than a short period of time. I, I didn't have those simulations when I was driving over today, but I can promise you, if that tower was there, I would have been able to see it for more than a short period of time, in anybody's definition.
Yeah, mine.
Is there something you can do to better make that fit with the scenery? I mean, I, I agree with Mr. Johnson, it looks like a Christmas tree stuck up on top of a pole.
It, well.
We've seen bell towers. I will suggest to you, I'm not sure, my business partner suggested you could make it look like a water tower. You're out in the country, you could make it look like a grain silo. And it truly looks like the Charlie Brown Christmas tree up on a pole.
We could.
I think the monopole.
The monopole is probably the best application. The monopoles tend to just fade into the background.
What about the flagpole?
The flagpole is problematic because it limits the number of antennas the carriers can get inside the pole and the heat. They just will not use them.
So we've had testimony before this board that those flagpoles can be properly, in fact, I think it was one of your own clients that testified that they could ventilate the flagpole canister.
David Smith?
Yeah, I think size-wise, they can't get the modern antennas inside a flagpole.
David Smith, Verizon Wireless, RF.
Here, address, please, David.
I'm sorry.
Here, address, please.
Seventy-seven oh-one East Telcom Parkway, Temple Terrace, Florida. So with flagpoles, currently, I'm not aware of anything that we have proposed to any of our, our candidates that have ventilation. Normally, when we have a flagpole, all the ones that we get, they're enclosed, and we can't put our amplifiers up top, so we have to put the equipment at the ground, which causes a lot of loss, the coverage and everything shrinks, so, and, and, and as a result, we have to put more towers further down the line because they don't have the greatest impact versus the tower top putting the radios up top.
Okay, so you're saying it's impossible, is what you're saying?
Not saying it's impossible, but in this, for what we're trying to achieve, if we did something like that, we'd probably have to put another tower somewhere in between the other ones because it wouldn't, wouldn't reach as far as that we're trying to gain. So like I said, it just, yeah, it just, it just shrinks the pattern because of the loss, all the amplifiers at the bottom. So when we, we, especially with the newer gen equipment, everything's integrated, so we want to get the greatest, latest technology with the best speed.
And what stops you from doing like a bell tower?
That would be, that would be up to Anthem Net and the property owner.
So why, Mr. Smith, is that they brought up the, the concept of optimal spacing? What, what is that? I mean, obviously, we're dealing with 5G towers, I understand they need to be closer together and the like, but what is an optimal spacing for, you know, an off-take or another, another tower?
Well, it, it all depends, right? We don't have a flat distance of like every so miles we're going to put it. It all depends on the geographic, right? The amount of traffic, the neighboring sites, how tall they are, just because, say, both of them are at two-hundred feet, and we put a site right in the middle. Again, the antennas are different, they have different tilts, we change the powers, we, what we do is optimize, right? So if the traffic's here, we can pull the signal back, have it pull off to the other site and, and kind of help out. Sorry about that.
Can we, Denise, can we bring the Pasco mapper back up?
Do you, you want, do you want to see his RF information? Is this inside?
Well, I'm just.
He must leave the map right now.
Yeah, so we just approved another tower site that, by my calculations, is about a.
To the west.
One-point-three miles away.
Correct.
From this tower.
Going to the west.
To the west?
Yeah, the Chris site.
Is that the, yeah, the one that we.
When they moved back?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
They, they moved back up. That's where I'm going with this, is that, I mean, I understand we're dealing with 5G technology, and we've got, you know, we're, we need to get a tower type, tighter spacing of towers and the like for, for that technology to work. I, I get it, but I'm struggling with the need for a tower a mile away from another tower.
I understand, if, if you look at the maps, you can just see where our propagations are.
We're going to pull up, yeah, we're going to pull up his RF.
I did, but, yeah, I'm recalling the propagation from that new tower also, and.
Horizon's going to use both of those.
Right, exactly. That's part of my question.
So is the one we just approved, show on, show up on this map?
I, that's, I'm not sure if it does or not.
Yeah, we, we included.
That's what I'm trying to say, it's on page sixty-three of our packet. It shows both sites.
So what you're seeing now is the, the current coverage plus the proposed coverage of the, the site that you're reviewing now. So like right here, this is the, the current site that we're discussing, and of course, everything else around it is our existing coverage for our AWS band. So you can see here, the, the purpose of this site is really to cover up to the north, to the east, and over here to the south and southeast with the new growth and development. The other site that you're referencing is over here, and I believe it's on the next side or the slide before, where it shows how it fits in there, and this one covers here, here, and covers these neighborhoods down here. As far as spacing and you're saying 5G, I mean, everything's kind of moving up that way. Again, that's just the technology, the frequencies are staying the same. But as we transition with these new services that we're doing, like home internet, the quality of signal, so why we put more out there is for capacity and quality of coverage. So these new services that we have, they have to have a better signal level, so we just have to beef up the network on that aspect. Plus, with all the new growth and development, it puts strains on the existing network, and that's why we're building these new towers.
Anything else you'd like to say?
I'm going to have Mr. Talby come up and just address some of the comments that were made about property values. Denise, your report, okay.
David Talby, Lee Power Incorporated, six-oh-nine East Jackson Street, Tampa. I have been sworn. In front of you, you do have my report. It speaks for itself, it's been developed over years and years. I've been studying this issue for over twenty-five years, starting up in Leon County, Jefferson County, all the way down to Collier County in Naples, which one of the, one of your speakers spoke about. I've studied urban towers relative to commercial development and residential development. I've studied rural towers as well. This is probably, you could consider a rural location, but I want to draw your attention to three things. One is the three-hundred-and-eighty-foot tower that Pinnacle owns, right next to the new PTC Boyett Centertown Development. That was a rural tower, three-hundred-and-eighty feet tall, guy wire supported, you can see it from miles and miles and miles. So now you have a developer who's taking the risk of purchasing the land, rezoning it, gaining entitlements, and now he's developing. As you know, the infrastructure's going in now, all in the shadow of a tower. Marada is now encroaching from the west, and they're also in the shadow of this tower, the far west houses in Marada, you know, the Lagoon Development, you're very familiar with that. On the far east side of Marada, at Curly Road and Linner Road, you've got a hundred-and-eighty-foot tower, monopole tower, Verizon tower. And I've confirmed that that tower has had no impact on any of the valuations in Marada or any other surrounding developments. Just like I find everywhere, there's no data, and I'm talking about sale and resale data that indicate these towers are impacting values. Now, let me, the third thing I want to draw your attention to, I spoke to your, two of your appraisers, Chris Poe and Dan Veolia, talked to them several times, not once has your appraiser, or any appraiser along the whole west coast of Florida and into central Florida, has a property appraiser made a reduction in an assessment of a property, commercial, rural, residential, residential, urban, whatever you want to call it, because of proximity to a tower. So you have to ask yourself, how can that be? When you hear these residents speaking about these impacts. The appraisers deal with the same issue I do, market data, and there's simply no market data that indicates and supports that these towers impact values. You know, market is a pool of buyers, not just one individual, so.
The problem is, is that you're talking about towers that were already in place. So how can you tell they, whether they impacted the value or not? They were there when the home buyer, home buyer bought the home. And what, there was no impact after they bought the home?
Well, I don't, I don't quite follow your, I gave you the example.
How do you not follow it?
I gave you the example.
The tower was there, I can see the tower, I buy the home, versus the house is there, I buy the house, and then suddenly somebody wants to build the tower next to me. I can tell whether there's an impact after, if the home's there before the tower. If the tower's already there and I decide to buy the home, there's no impact because I'm, I know it's there.
I've, I've, I've actually researched this issue, so I've researched.
Well, so have I.
I've researched existing, you know, existing dwellings when a new tower came up, and then you researched sale and resale following the installation of the new tower. I've, I've actually researched that. I've talked to the realtors, I've talked to the property owners, I've knocked on doors.
So is there any data?
I've, I've, I've actually gone beyond trying to find some data that would indicate there's an impact. That's always been my goal.
Is there any data regarding time on market?
Same thing. We deal with, we deal with market conditions and market time and, you know, all the time. And I've researched to see if there's any extended marketing period with a house near a tower, and there just simply isn't one. Occasionally, you'll find a buyer, very occasionally, who's adverse to the tower, this existing tower, but again.
That'd be me.
But again, the market is a pool of buyers, and there's, these houses always sell, and they sell within the same marketing time as, you know, the, the others, the other sales kind of within the same subdivision, but let's say they're half a mile away or a quarter mile away, with, you know, you can't see it at all.
So we have a letter that was in our, that was submitted to us from Alexandra Baker. And in her letter, she says, "The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Guidelines categorize cell towers as quote hazards and nuisances, and HUD requires its certified appraisers to take the presence of nearby cell towers into consideration when determining the value of single-family residential properties." Is that a true statement?
I don't really deal in resident, in HUD valuations, but even if it is, absolutely you can report it. Why wouldn't you? If there's, if there's a cell tower nearby and you're appraising a house, sure you can report it, why wouldn't you? But I've also, you'll find this funny, I've also talked to realtors where a tower was right on top of a house, and they said, "What tower?" I think you, you made a comment that these towers tend to blend in. I've knocked on doors with a tower that you can basically reach out and touch of a resident, said, you know, "Why did you buy this house? You know, this tower's right behind you." This one lady in Tampa says, "What tower?" I go, "Well, let's walk out your front door and look at it."
If you live next to this tower, you think somebody would say that?
What? No, no, no.
If you live next to this tower, you think somebody would say that?
No, my, my, my point is that they blend in, but I, I hear all kinds of stories, but no, you'll see this tower, absolutely.
Come along with me.
I mean, there's, I mean, there's no question you'll be able to see the tower.
The bottom line is, how many, how many loans, how many mortgages on properties are HUD mortgages? You don't look at HUD? You don't have any homes are purchased under that program?
Well, I think what you said is that an appraiser would have to report that the tower was visible, is that what you're saying? And I don't have a problem with that.
Take the presence of nearby cell phone towers.
Into consideration when determining the value of single-family residential properties.
Sure. Why wouldn't you? You can do that. But you're just reporting it, but there's no data that indicates it's going to have any impacts.
You're saying they're taking it into consideration, but doesn't mean that there's an. You're saying they're taking it into consideration, but doesn't mean that there's an impact.
That's exactly right.
Well, I, I tend to take the common sense approach, I've been in the real estate business for over 50 years here, I'm pretty familiar with values. So, in my opinion, if I had that monstrosity next to my house, it would impact the value of my property. If you think it doesn't, then you're just making up a story.
So you wouldn't have a problem buying the gentleman's property that the tower's going to be erected behind? There'd be no loss of value?
Today's market price.
I'm telling, and Chairman, I appreciate what you're saying, I'm telling you that there's no data, you cannot find any data that's going to tell you or show you that these towers impact surrounding residential values. I've studied it, I've studied it for 25 years, you're not going to find anybody with more information about this issue than me.
With all due respect, I don't care about the value at this point, I care about the quality of life. And if I bought that, I wouldn't want to look at that giant Christmas tree.
Well, I'm just here to talk about valuations, so...
Well, we're here to protect our people, that's our number one job.
Yes, sir.
So, if we think it's not going to hurt the people who live here, then we're going to be all for it. But if it is, then I'm not telling that right now. So... Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just ask you this. Would it be your preference for a long continuance to go back and figure out how to find either another site or a tower which could be more compatible with the area, or would your preference be a recommendation of denial?
We think we have exhausted the search for another property in the ring, and I hear all of you, I hear what you've said, I understand it, I appreciate it. You all know, I've been in front of you many times, and I don't, I don't often bring you a site like this, but this one is what it is because of what's on the ground out there, it's what, we had limited choices. So I think we would prefer to keep it moving.
Okay, well, we'll, yeah, and you're not willing to change the configuration of the tower?
We can, I can, I've heard you
That's why I asked the question.
Right.
You mentioned the Monopole might be amenable to that.
Or a bell tower.
Or something else.
I'm sorry, Mr. Williams?
A silo, as Mr. Moody said.
We, we can discuss that internally, and if we decide to modify our application, I think we could still do that after today, Denise, could we not?
You can, you can modify the application, the actual, the way that the tower looks, or whether it be a close Monopole or something else, you can. But the planning commission has in front of it today, the application that they're reviewing.
I think that's why I asked you the question.
Let me just confirm.
Let me state that another way, the risk you take if you try to change your application after it's gone to the planning commission, is the board may say, "We got a recommendation from the planning commission that was based on a different application," and they may remand it back and say, "We want to know what planning commission's recommendation is on this new tower," that's the risk you take by moving forward on something that may change after the fact.
You know, this is the second time I can, well, actually, this is the third time I can remember, the second time for your client that I can recall that they've appeared before this board, both of which were controversial cellphone tower sites. And I'm shocked that after the first hearing, where you just wouldn't give, you would not attempt to compromise the look for the look of the tower, I mean, the proposal's Monopole or nothing, and then you're going to do it again, I'm just not quite sure that that's a good strategy going forward when you come before this board.
Well, I'm sorry that you feel that way, Mr. Moody, I've only been in front of this board with this client twice, and that other site was a tree, and
And the board recommended denial that day too.
And I had, I had a landowner adamant about a tree, it was in the lease, so at the podium, I cannot make that change. So, and I'm sorry that you're choosing to penalize AnthemNet going forward.
I'm not, that has nothing, I'm just making a statement that I'm shocked that that's
Yeah, I want you to understand too, that we're not penalizing anyone, we're just protecting people that live here.
I
Same thing I'd do for you if you lived there.
Mr. Moody gave you the option to do a continuance to try to readdress that, and you wouldn't take that, so...
Can I just ask one more question?
Yeah.
I noticed that there's a number of utility, electric utility poles, wooden poles in this area. Did anybody explore the option of doing small cell coverage, and if so, why was that not an option?
Maybe it's not for Verizon, small cells normally are not that high, they're about 30, 50, 60 feet and some, depends on municipality, right? But in general, in order to cover that type of area we're trying to cover, you would probably have to put 20-plus small cells in this place, all the way up and down the road. That's just, it's just
Right, but they would presumably all be on those electric utility poles and have less of a visual impact, wouldn't they?
As far as the utility poles, it's, some of them, we put, we partner with like Duke or the electric companies and stuff, a lot of ours are self-performed, so we'll put a steel pole in the right of way. But still, it'll be in the right of way.
But what would be the height of those small cells?
Whatever's approved for municipality, like in Tampa, we average from somewhere 35, 45 feet, seen some in Miami around 60 feet, really depends on
So, but they wouldn't be much higher than what those existing
Yes.
Utility poles that are there?
If, if that's what's approved for Pasco County, again, I'm not familiar with the real estate.
Denise, is that sound accurate to you?
Yeah, so basically, those would be approved by, those would be allowed by right, because there was that preemption that passed several years ago, so they're under chapter 27 of our Pasco County Code of Ordinances.
So there's a feasible way they could get similar service through small cells? I'm not saying it's Well, he said it is, but it would take, it would take 20 or 30 of them.
Well, it'd take a lot more than, and it's kind of like, the way you look at it, even though you say small cells, it's basically a mini site. So it takes the same type of resources, I know it's a little bit cheaper than, than say, a full-size site here, we still got the fiber concerns, right? We might not be able to get fibers out of all these poles where we need them, right, so if we place them everywhere, and of course, they're going to have to be in the right of way. So what we're trying to, yeah, what we're trying to cover, we're not going up and down the street, so if we need to make sure we're covering these neighborhoods, do we have right-of-way access in those areas? Again, just high level, not really sure where we are on the real estate side, but from our perspective, I know that's some of the challenges they have. Okay.
All right, any other questions, any further discussions? Yeah, Chris?
I'll just chip in, I appreciate, and I've done work with them before, you've done, worked on our school board cell towers, and I appreciate your work, but as somebody who lives out here, I, I agree with all my colleagues, I just think it, I don't vote on this one, but it just stands out just awful. So, even if I did, I would vote no.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, we have a motion, we have a second. No further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, okay? Motion carries, deny the application.
Mr. Chair, before you adjourn, I just wanted to bring the planning commission's attention to the noted item that's on the agenda, which is the 2025 public hearing schedule that was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners on September 17th, I think it was. So just wanted to let you know that that's the public hearing schedule for 2025.
Where was, where was that located?
It is a noted item on your agenda, so it should be part of your agenda packet.
I missed it.
It's, it's basically like three sheets with all the dates for 2025. So when Mr. Moody was saying, "Would you like a long continuance?", I brought up the 2025 public hearing schedule, so...
Okay.
That's what I had, thank you.
You have it?
You lead a horse to water.
It's going to come through in my packet, I'll have to go back.
All right.
Move to adjourn?
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Trees and wildlife depend on you to keep them healthy. Excess fertilizer, grass clippings, trash, oils, and pet waste wash into gutters and storm drains when it rains. Stormwater carries these pollutants directly into our lakes and rivers, creating an unhealthy environment for fish, waterfowl, and other aquatic animals. Storm drains are meant for clean rainwater. Most other discharges are illegal. If you suspect an illicit discharge, please contact Pasco County Department of Public Works at 727-834-3611.